Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. With the time being 6:00 PM on Tuesday, November 10th, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order. As a reminder, on March 12th, 2020, Governor Baker issued an executive order modifying certain requirements of the open meeting law to enable public bodies to carry out their responsibilities while adhering to public health recommendations regarding social distancing. The executive order relieves public bodies from the requirement in the open meeting law that meetings be conducted in a public place that is open and physically accessible to the public, provided that the public body makes provisions to ensure public access to the deliberations through adequate alternative means. In this case, we're utilizing Zoom and have listed information for joining the meeting on the school district website. As another reminder, this meeting is being recorded both video and audio and will be posted on the school district website. The first item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the October 27th, 2020 minutes.
So moved.
A second.
There's a motion in a second to approve the minutes. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Lori, would you poll the committee, please?
Member Naparata?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yeah.
Member Mallett?
Yeah.
Member Adam Obles?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes, the motion passes. So before moving into the rest of our agenda, I did want to let folks know that the school committee received a letter today from the teachers of the Webster School District, and I'm going to read it in its entirety for everyone to be able to hear. The letter's dated November 10th, 2020. "I am writing with the hope that you will be able to offer guidance to teachers of the Webster Public Schools. At a meeting on Monday, October 26th, the school committee decided to push up the date of their next meeting to Monday, November 2nd, to help accelerate the planning and set the parameters around moving to a hybrid model of instruction." "The superintendent was asked and given four business days to put together, distribute, and collect survey results from staff and parents regarding their feelings about moving to a hybrid model. This was a big ask in such a short amount of time, but Dr. Gogan, acting in good faith, readily agreed to collect this data for the committee. At the meeting on November 2nd, the data was presented. It's attached to this letter as well. Misrepresented and deceitfully used to justify the wishes of certain committee members and a minority of the families served by the Webster Public Schools. The WEA, the Local Teachers Union, had submitted a letter to the committee, which is also attached, to be read stating the union's position and outlining issues that needed troubleshooting before moving to a hybrid model. This letter was not read, but briefly summarized and negligibly considered. The floor was opened to parents who expressed their concerns about remote learning and their desire to move to a hybrid model regardless of Webster's high-risk status. There were the usual insulting comments about teachers needing to do their jobs and the laughably incorrect accusation that teachers are running this. Teachers have had almost no control in any major decisions that have taken place since this pandemic began. If by teachers are running this, the speaker meant that teachers are dedicating even more of their time and financial resources than usual to provide the best instruction they can in a constantly changing landscape at the expense of their own physical and mental health because of their love and dedication to the students that they serve, then I am in agreement. However, this was not the intended implication, excuse me, of the speaker. The committee ultimately decided to move the previously agreed-upon safety parameters of moving to hybrid after Webster was three weeks out of the red or at-risk category. Member Millet suggested possibly amending the parameters to one or two weeks to strike a compromise between those wishing to exercise caution and those interested in expediting the transition. Her suggestion was ignored. The committee agreed to set the date for a hybrid start without examining the logistical problems surrounding the transitions as brought forth by the superintendent and the teachers' union. It was clear that this meeting was not the open problem-solving forum it was fraudulently presented as by the school committee. I want to thank you in advance for taking the time to read these words and consider the concerns of the majority of parents and staff within the Webster Public Schools. This majority was undemocratically suppressed, and we are grateful for the possible chance to be heard." Included in this letter, it states here, "Superintendent's surveys mentioned and misrepresented at the meeting. The majority of families and staff do not want to begin a hybrid model while Webster is in the red or at-risk category for community COVID infections." And then included with this letter is the survey results that were part of Dr. Gogan's newsletter and a list of 102 teachers and educators who have signed this letter. So the letter wasn't read, the previous letter wasn't read at the last meeting. I didn't realize that there was an expectation for me to read the letter during the last meeting, so I apologize for that. But I am now reading this one. I'm not sure if the author of that letter is interested in saying anything, or if your thoughts have been summarized and we can move into the rest of our agenda. So I'm just opening that up.
So thank you for reading the letter. I know that's how a lot of us were feeling. We felt the last letter was completely glossed over, so I appreciate you taking the time to actually hear what the issues are and where we're coming from. So thank you for reading that, and thank you for giving all of us a voice that we really didn't have much the last time. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome. It was never my intention to not allow someone to say what they wanted to, so glad we were able to get that out there. If there's no further discussion, we'll move into the next item on our agenda, which is the superintendent's report. Good evening, Dr. Gogan.
Good evening, everyone. Before I move on to my full report, I just want to let the school committee and the teachers that are watching know that I support the teachers, and I think we've been working very collaboratively together with the shift of when we were going to move to hybrid. And I know that everyone was pretty comfortable with the three weeks out of the red, and the surprise came with the shift a lot quicker with us coming into the red. So I'm going to speak a little bit more about the day-to-day implications of why there's an increase in anxiety from our teachers in my report, so you will hear a little bit more about that. I will just start by telling you about personnel. We've had some new hires. We're welcoming Melissa Kirkland as an ABA at Webster Middle School. We are also welcoming Christine Smith, an ABA at Webster Middle School. We have received the resignations of Cairo Wilder, a paraprofessional at Park Ave., and Michelle White, another paraprofessional at Park Ave., and Sandra Warren, an ABA at Park Ave. We have also hired Carolyn Danielle as the new Bartlett High School Administrative School Year Assistant. We do have some open positions, and some of them are in process for hiring people, hopefully by the end of this week. We are looking for a long-term sub for a health teacher at Bartlett High School, a long-term sub for the rest of the year for grade one, where we have posted for the interim dean position with us moving to hybrid back at Park Avenue School. We are in the process of interviewing for the bilingual liaison that we have put into place for this year with COVID funds. Custodian interviews have been being held, and hopefully we'll have some new news on that. And technology support personnel interviews are being held, and hopefully we'll have some new positions there. So I want to move on from personnel to talk a little bit about the hybrid shift. As we've been stating and we've been communicating, it's not as easy as just turning the switch. And we absolutely have had solid plans in place, but those plans have been and will be maneuvered and evolved as we enter this next phase of a hybrid model. One of the things that we have had to do was create remote learning academies. We have created them for grades one, two, and four over at Park Avenue Elementary School. That required 122 students being moved from classrooms to new classrooms. So that was dealt with with a very personal touch in a phone call from Mrs. Blocky and Mrs. Parmley, and I believe Mrs. Mackay helped out with some of that and some of the counselors. So that has been done. The teachers now are welcoming their new students into their classrooms. We have, because the cohorts have changed with that, the busing routes have had to be updated and modified, and Mrs. Perengeli will speak a little bit more about that in her report to give you the full detail. But to all of the parents that are watching, we want to remind them that students will need a bus pass to ride a bus this year. Our food preparation for serving both breakfast in the classroom and lunch is in process. We are also, will be having the drive-through pickup meals, which are pickup and couple of meals for the week, the six-meal packets. That is open every Thursday and every Monday, and those locations are at Park Avenue and Webster Middle School. And that is from 10:30 to 12:30. Schools have, principals have been working on their communication with families. I know Mr. Thomas held an informational Zoom for families to talk about the shift to hybrid last Friday. They did attend that to hear some of the questions and concerns. Principals are sending home letters to discuss and remind families about safety protocols and having up-to-date emergency contacts. We are in the process of doing some staffing adjustments for those staff that just cannot work in a hybrid model, so those are in, almost completed. And we would like to inform the community, as we did before, that we have applied for the Bionox Now Rapid Point testing for our schools to do some onsite testing in our nurse's office. We are waiting to hear if we're one of the schools that will be selected. I think that would help us dramatically with mitigating the spread of COVID. So those are some of the hybrid adjustments. We did a quick snapshot today just to share with you, and I think we're going to be sending out like a snapshot across the district, a weekly snapshot of what's going on. I'm not sure if you are aware or not, but the COVID cases in Massachusetts have increased dramatically over the last couple of weeks. I think they're up 43%. So the governor has just come out to share in the daily dashboard today that there are over 2,000 confirmed cases today. The positivity rate across Massachusetts is 2.63. And the largest group, age group of students getting are students from zero to 19. That's the highest number of students, highest number age group of people getting cases. Governor Baker had announced that with the uptick that he, their field hospitals may be open again. So we're entering a phase of increase, which we know. We also know that the state has changed the metrics. We're no longer in the red in Webster. We are in the yellow, but our Webster data, over the last week, there have been 21 new cases. The previous week there were 17 cases. And how does that all impact us? Well, I'm going to give you a little snapshot in the schools. So to date, we have only had four positive student cases, and most of those students were out of school because they were in either Cohort A or Cohort B, so that is good news. And we have only had one staff positive case. When I talk about the staffing, potential staffing shortage, it's not so much the positive cases, it's what happens before you're positive or when we suspect you're positive. And according to the guidance, if you're a close contact, you must quarantine for 14 days, and I don't think there's any ifs, ands around that. So just to give you a snapshot on where we've been for students and staff around close contacts in our school setting, this is just specifically in our school setting, there have been 10 students that had to go home to quarantine due to close contacts from school and six staff. So that gives you just a little bit of a snapshot. We certainly know that the governor and the Department of Education are aware of the increases of COVID cases, but they, governor's new executive orders, for those of you who haven't seen them, include a stay-at-home order from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM, and that business is closed at 9:30 to help getting people home. And that now masks are to be worn even if you're within six feet of distancing. Private gatherings are limited to 10. Outdoor gatherings are limited to 25. And DESI and DPH have changed the health metrics. And so the news has definitely highlighted this, that schools in the red should be going hybrid, is what they're saying. Schools in the green, yellow, and gray should try to prioritize full in-person learning with the safety guidelines if feasible. So given all the changing metrics, we thought it would be wholess to send a weekly update to families so that they are informed about what's actually happening in our schools so that they can make their decisions. Any questions before I move on to other updates? Okay. Other updates. We continue to work collaboratively with our town. We've had two meetings with the town manager and accountant and HR staff over there with our HR staff to sort of work together, and we have been decided that we'd be meeting monthly to make sure that the flow of communication around staffing and supporting our staff are united. I want to let you know that the Regional Environmental Council will be setting up a farm, farmer's market for the community, November 3rd through December 17th, and that's every Thursday at North Village from 12:30 to 2:30. That's great news for our families. I did speak to you about our food distribution drive-throughs. We had parent-teacher conferences today, and our teachers were busy, and our students will not be in school tomorrow because it's Veterans Day, and parent-teacher conference nights are virtual on Thursday night, and every teacher will have a Zoom link, and those have been passed out to the principals, to the parents, and they'll have open sessions from 6:00 to 8:00. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, the Business Manager Report. Good evening, Mrs. Perengeli. You're on mute, Mrs. Perengeli.
Well, that's good, because then you missed the frog in my throat when I started, so that's a good thing. So I'm all primed and ready to go now. First item is the business, under my report is the school building update. So after our last meeting, we were waiting for RFS to be submitted. October 29th was the deadline. They needed to be submitted by 2:00 PM on that date. I am happy to say that we had 10 designers, very reputable firms, there's some good competition out there, submit RFS for designer selection. So our OPM, Ken Gaiet, has been working closely with the MSBA and working back and forth, submitting reference checks to them, and we have copies, the Designer Selection Panel, which would include Dr. Gogan, myself, and Mr. Ted Aviles from the Building Committee. We'll have three seats on that panel out of 13. We will be meeting on Tuesday, November 17th, at 8:30 in the morning with the Designer Selection Panel to review all the proposals that we're sitting in and putting them in a ranking order. Once we do that and rank them, we will have the opportunity to interview the top three candidates if we choose to do so at a meeting two weeks after that, so that would be on December 1st. So we will see how the process goes. We have our packets to review. We are encouraged and excited about the quality and the number of received applicants. So we are hopeful and look forward to Tuesday, November 17th, and I will bring you an update once we have more information on that. Are there any questions? Second item on my report is the end-of-year report. Why am I bringing this back? Well, I've already made a mistake. It's one of those wake up at 7:00 in the morning and realize I didn't do that. During the report, I needed to pull out prepaid tuitions. If you remember, in FY '20, I prepaid $495,000 of tuition for FY '21, totally acceptable by law. You can prepay collaborative tuition for up to a year. So we use some of that surplus, knowing that we had been cut in the FY '21 to help offset some of the expenses, and we worked with the town to reduce our budget for FY '21. So I needed to pull those out of FY '20 because those expenses need to be reported in FY '21. So I made those adjustments, incorrected the report, reached out to the state. But in doing that, I think the important thing to note is that by pulling out $495,000 out of our special ed, meant that we didn't meet our FY '20 maintenance of effort, our IDEA maintenance of effort. What that is, out of your special ed grant, you have to meet your prior year's expenditures, so you cannot be below that unless you have exceptions, allowable exceptions. Some of those exceptions could be, you might have had large tuitions in one year, and then the next year they've left, so now you don't, that leaves a gap. You could have, an exception could be staffing. You had trouble filling a couple staffing positions over the year, so you had subs or somebody in that position where there was a gap. And we had all of that happen. We had a very significant large tuition age out about a third of the way through the year, which left at least $135,000 gap. Our gap was about 100 below, I want to say 120 below our FY '19 expenses. So in doing that, 135 would make up that gap right there, and then we also had a couple staffing positions that were difficult to fill. So we're going to be okay. I believe we'll be fine. We'll fill out the exception report. They run numbers in January, and if there's any concerns, they'll come back to me, but we've already had a conversation about it, and we feel like we're going to be in okay shape. Which is a good thing, because if you're not in okay shape, you have to pay that money back, and that's something you never want to have to do. And that's something the state doesn't want to see you have to do, because that money goes right back to the feds. But we are within that allowable exception, and I don't anticipate any issues with that. It was something actually we were watching closely, because we knew going in, in being out of school in March and not having all of those services and being able to fill positions that had gone, we knew about the tuition, so it was something we were watching and, you know, we're potentially anticipating. So I wanted to make you aware of that, and it's something we will watch closely again for FY '21 coming up this year, too. It's on our radar. Are there any questions about that? I know it's a lot of information. No? Okay. And the next item on my report is FY '20 Food Service Financial Report. In your package, you should have received a ledger for FY '20 end-of-year food service. In closing that account out and looking at that, I was pleased at the progress that was made during FY '20. It's too bad that COVID hit, because we were really, we have been really working hard to manage our labor costs, watch our food costs, and at the same time, serving quality food to our students and staff. Once COVID hit, we knew our primary goal was to just make sure we were offering healthy food to the community. And we knew we had to have staff on board working, so we didn't cut our staff. We were paying our staff. They were there every day showing up, and we didn't have the numbers that we had during the school year, so we were anticipating and watching that closely. But if you want to take a quick look at your report, I think what's important to note is, if you look in July of 2019, that large payment that was made from federal, the revenue that was received from federal and state is about $158,000. That's prior year revenue. That is from May and June of the previous year, but we don't receive it until July, so it's recorded in July. So I usually back that number out, and then I'll add in the May and June receipts that we get over the summer for this year, which would have been $116,000. So if you do the math and we've gone through it, the food service program, even with the COVID-related expenses, made $43,000 last year. They showed a profit. We have just been, since we've gone CEP, our goal was just to break even, right? We wanted to feed all the kids in our district and just break even. We weren't in this to make a profit. We wanted to bring healthy food, quality food, and make sure we were serving all the students in Webster. And I'm really happy to say that we are doing that. We are doing it well, and we have, you know, exceeded the breaking even point. So I think the Food Service Department and Ms. Nylan, Chef Nylan, receive huge kudos because they have been working really hard on minimizing any food waste and making sure they're doing their due diligence to manage. I think it's also important to note a couple of things that, that cold storage fire that happened last year. I believe that was in springtime that happened. That's where we get all of our commodities delivered from and served. So during that time, we were not receiving, we still haven't been receiving the commodities. That's the government food that we get at really discounted prices. So we weren't receiving that food, and we still haven't been. We're just working with another company. The state has went out and regrouped with that because cold storage is not going to be coming back. So we've been doing this just off of our regular food without using those government dollars, so that says a lot for what they're doing. And it also, if you just look at the window when we were out from April to June, and you look at the revenue that was received and the expenses that we had, in that timeframe, we lost about $11,000. So overall, we were concerned about that, but it pretty much, the program ran itself during that time, and we were able to pick up the slack. So I wanted to make you aware of that and answer any questions if you have about that. Any questions there? No. And then just in other news and updates, we have been working really hard on our transportation and making sure that we have our list up to date. I still have real concerns that our families still don't realize that they may need a bus pass to get on the bus and that we don't have all accurate numbers. I know we've been through the list. I know the schools have called homes that they didn't receive surveys from. They've talked to them, but I am still getting calls of saying, well, I was on a bus last year. Shouldn't I just be automatically placed on it this year? We are doing our best to manage those. I have, over the past few days, as it gets closer, people are realizing more that, oh, I better check to see what bus we're on. I posted them today, up-to-date list. I've worked with transportation. I should give a shout out to Nancy at AA. I must call her about, I probably called her 15 times today. That's how many changes. I had about 25 kids that we had to move off one bus route onto another bus route and maneuver some buses around because the buses are full, and we were trying to adjust starts to accommodate, and we pretty much thought we had everything. And we pretty much thought we had everything squared away and everything looked great. And then when I was walking out the door, we got another change, which is I don't have space on the bus, so I'm going to have to maneuver a little bit again. But it's a challenge and it's not easy. It's not just, it's not just putting a child on a different bus because this factors, this safety, which is our number one. When, you know, on those busy roads, which side of the bus is picking up, you know, that you've got to make sure the buses are heading in the right direction. You have timing. Is this bus doing this part of town? There's no way they can go to that part of town. So there's a lot of variables in it. It's, it's not just, the list is cut in half and it's even. The cohorts are not always even between bus routes. So it, it's kind of like juggling and puzzle pieces and we're working it through day by day. The bus routes are up on the website. I will be sending out another one call tomorrow, letting parents know that the buses, the bus routes are on the websites for them and to review and if they have concerns to call and to make sure they're aware again that they need to have a bus pass. So that's the only way we can be sure that they're eligible to take a bus. So, any questions?
Mrs. Perengeli.
Yes, Ms. Smill.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment that I'm sure you have thought of. But going around town, we have an awful lot of construction going on and a lot of different roads have been closed. Sure that's going to add to some issues.
Yes, and the town is really good about talking to us and transportation to let us know about routes and how we rework. I think it's important to know in your neighborhoods where there's construction. And if it's interfering with your bus stop, you should call transportation to see if there's going to be, if it, you know, if there's a different place they should wait. We're comfortable with Lake Parkway opening up. I know that's a big one. That should be open by next week. So I was told that the paving, they're putting on the base paving for that this week. And then they'll be wrapping that up for the winter. So we should be in good shape there, but I know there's a lot of side roads. And so if you have any questions about that, it's definitely good to contact the bus company, AA Transportation. But the town is really great about letting us know when they're blocking something off and we can't get through.
Well, certainly planning these bus routes have not been easy. Adding construction to the mix, I'm sure just adds another wrinkle.
Yeah, it's, it's fun. And it's also difficult because we're trying, our goal is for the drivers and families. You know, we can't have one bus route for bus A and another bus route for bus B. You know, cohorts B and C. So we're trying to keep, if you're on bus three, bus three is going to have pretty much the same route every day. Because with substitute drivers and other drivers coming in, you don't want to be confusing A day and B day. So we're trying to keep the routes the same without, you know, we're, we're working it through. We're working it through. I, I'm not, I'm not the most favorite person for some parents right now. I know that. It's hard when you can only fit 26 on a bus. And there may have been instances where you know, families could maybe, or were walking, you know, a tenth of a mile, one direction to jump on the bus. And, you know, now that bus is full and I'm gonna, and I'm saying, I'm sorry, you can't do that. Well, we did it last year. And it might have been allowed last year because there was space and there was the flexibility to do that. But now we have to stand firm. And, you know, say our priority is that mile and a half mark. That's our priority. That's our policy and that's what we're working with. So, you know, we're, we're doing the best we can. And, you know, I talk to as many parents as I can. They can always call AA Transportation or the school department or myself if they have any questions about that. If they didn't get a bus pass and they think they should have, they can, you know, call the school that their child attends, or they can call my office and I'll speak to them. And we're doing our best to work with everybody. I know it's a challenge. But we have to stick, you know, we're, we're sticking to the mile and a half policy at the middle and high school and working with families that way. I know it's also a challenge too because many times they would go to a daycare in the afternoon and get on at home and now we're doing just one bus, one stop. That's, that's the way it has to be in order for the cohorts to work. So it's, it's not just a challenge for me. I'm sure it's a challenge for families and parents as they're trying to, you know, do the best they can with their home lives and take care of their families. So it's all the way around.
Well, thank you for the, oh, yes, Ms. Smill.
I don't know who would like to address this. Maybe the superintendent, but I happened to see on Facebook today that there are parents concerned because they would now like to change their child's cohort. And wondering if they can do that. And I was just going to ask you to address that. So parents listening, know if it can be done or if not.
Thank you. Great question. I'd be happy to answer that. At this point, we are not allowing shifts of cohorts. The intricacies of ensuring that we are abiding by the safety guidelines allow us to have anywhere from 10 to maybe 12, depending on the classroom size, students in the classroom. And it's, those cohort numbers are set. The only changes that did occur were based on developing the remote academy cohorts for grades one, two, and four. The one thing that I would like to take the opportunity to remind families is those who have selected for remote only are committing to remote only for the marking period. We, again, can't just accept kids to make those changes. We don't have the staffing and a park avenue. Quite frankly, we don't have the room to abide by additional classrooms. I mean, we will, and I think we've made that clear all along from our original report that was published back in July and sent to families. We have given parents several opportunities to make up their mind for remote learning. And right now we are, we are having to hold ground on that. So thank you for asking that.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan. And just going back to Mrs. Perengeli's report, thank you for your very thorough report and for helping us understand a little bit more about the busing piece. I, I understand that it just seems that no matter what any of us really do, whether we're parents or school community members or teachers or administrators, that there's always going to be folks that are feeling like their needs are either not being met or could be met in a better way. And it just seems like an impossible situation that we're all trying to make the best of. And I appreciate the detail because it really does add another dimension of understanding, I think, to, to the why behind some of these decisions.
Thank you.
Is that the conclusion of your report, Mrs. Perengeli?
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay, thanks. The next item on the agenda is the principal report. Mrs. Peterson from Webster Middle School. Good evening.
Hello, everybody. So I have four items to report on tonight. Dr. Gogan already mentioned that we started conferences. We started this afternoon and then again on Thursday evening. We at the middle school are using a site called My Conference Time for parents to sign up. And so they have a designated time rather than waiting in a waiting room all, all afternoon. We do have to say that I haven't officially looked at the data, but just the feedback from teachers already is that we're trying to find the bright lights in COVID. And one of the things that is nice is that parents, they're getting a lot more parents involved in conferences than in the past because parents don't have to worry about babysitters or getting home from work in time to do a conference. So we actually have a couple teams who have their time slots totally filled. And I've had some parents contact me that they weren't able to get into conferences. So that's good that we are having that communication with families. So, school council, as you know, we have to have a school council. And I am very pleased to say that we actually have a full school council. We have three staff members. In addition to myself is four, three parents and one community member. And I've added a student representative to our team this year. So it's exciting to have a full team and some good representation. We've already, we've had two meetings so far and had some good discussions and got some good feedback and some ideas that I hadn't thought of. And that is the whole point of the school council. So just wanted to update you on that. In terms of hybrid prep, I know that Dr. Gogan and Perengeli have already talked about it, but at the middle school, we are also continuing to update our lists. We do have a couple of classrooms, particularly in the fifth and sixth grade, that are over our limits. So in the next couple of days, we are still trying to rearrange some classrooms and some students. We are trying to be as accommodating as possible, but we can't accommodate everybody, unfortunately. So we do have parents who have said remote and then they, they're changing their minds at the last minute. So we're holding to what Dr. Gogan said earlier. But we continue to work on it. And then also, I know that Dr. Gogan had talked a little bit about our concern for staff absences, which is a concern for us. But again, I want to find some bright light in that, that we at the middle school actually have 40% of our staff that has had perfect attendance so far this year, which is a huge feat in a normal year, let alone in a pandemic. So I'm very pleased with that and the dedication of our staff. 48% have only been absent one to four days. So hopefully, everybody stays well and washes hands and wears masks and knows numbers hold. So that is my report this evening. Unless there are any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none. We will move on to our next agenda item, which is the student representative update. Good evening, Vivian.
Good evening. So I have a pretty short report tonight. For athletics, the boys and girls soccer teams played Douglas High School on October 26th and October 28th. And as well as Sutton High School on November 2nd and November 4th. And then boys golf played Oxford on October 27th and Douglas on the 28th. And boys and girls cross country faced Oxford and Millbury on November 20, on November 3rd, sorry. For academics, the end of first quarter is coming up on November 13th. And most early action and early decision deadlines for colleges are coming up or have already passed. And NHS applications were due on November 4th and decisions will be coming out for those soon. For extracurriculars, the music boosters just up there, butter braid fundraiser and the pick up date for that is going to be November 16th. And the personal update with the letter from the teachers about wanting to stay remote. I, and I know that this is shared with a lot of the other students. If the wish is to stay remote, I think that the staff should be working on making the lessons more engaging and beneficial for students. Because at the moment, students really aren't learning anything anymore. We're just submitting assignments and going through the motions of everything. And friends of mine who have always been really hardworking students are struggling with the remote model right now in the way that most of our classes are being run. Like the valedictorian in my class is talking about dropping out. So there's obviously a problem with the way that we're doing things right now. And it's not sustainable by any means. So if we end up having to stay remote, I think serious revisions need to be made to the current schedule if we want to make this year beneficial for students. And that concludes the report tonight.
Thank you, Vivian. Thank you for your update and for your comments. It takes a lot of courage to sit here with administration and teachers and everybody here and express how you're experiencing things. So I'll give you credit. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the committee for Vivian? Hearing none. Thank you again, Vivian. The next item on the agenda under old business is the monthly report on fundraising applications. And just a reminder, it's not the role of school committee to approve fundraisers. That's the role of the building principal, but we do review them on a monthly basis.
As Vivian said, the music boosters are doing a butter braid fundraiser. They are not using students to congregate in any way, but they're using a lot of online. And they're doing, that's an annual fundraiser for them. And I also do want to compliment you, Vivian, for having the courage to speak up about how difficult remote learning is for everybody. You know, I think the reality is this isn't fun for anybody. And for students who are trying to experience a normal high school life, it is very challenging. And we are trying our best to make, make all of it work for kids. And there will be bumps in the road, but your input and the student input is very much valued. So keep that line of communication open with Mr. Thomas and myself if you, if you feel so inclined. But we are trying to do our best here in Webster. Every single one of us, no matter where we are at, it's not a good position to be in. So getting back to the music boosters, they're selling their butter braids. So anybody who's interested, please reach out to the students to buy one.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan. If there are no questions or comments regarding the fundraising report, we'll move on. So hearing none, the next item on the agenda under new business is the approval of Webster Middle School ELL position from .5 FTE to 1.0 FTE. Dr. Gogan?
Thank you. As you know, we had a .5 additional ELL teaching position over at Webster Middle School. We have not been able to fill it. And in the meantime, our ELL numbers have increased. We would like to increase that by .5 so we can hire another additional teacher for our English language learners over at Webster Middle School.
Dr. Gogan, can you explain to us where the funding for this position is coming from?
We have additional funding in our budget. We have saved some substantial money with substitute teaching and our numbers usually are very high in that. But we haven't had a lot of substitute teachers and we have ample, ample funds for that in our LEA budget.
Great, thank you. So are there any questions or comments from the committee regarding the approval of this 20-hour ELL position becoming a full-time ELL position at Webster Middle School? Hearing none.
Sorry, I'm just, to the chair, Dr. Gogan, so there'll be two full-time at Webster Middle School?
Yes, there will be.
Are there any other questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you call the committee, please?
Member Blythe?
Yeah.
Remember Naprata?
Yes.
Remember Mallett?
Yes.
Remember Adamopolis?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda, you're welcome. Sorry. The next item on the agenda is the approval of one FTE for the technology support professional. One second, Dr. Gogan.
Thank you. As you can well imagine, our tech support staff have been working overtime and triple time. And we have lost one of our support staff, but we are looking to replace that and also increase that by another person to to help meet the needs of the current situation that we find ourselves in. Once again, I think that will be funded through our LEA budget and we're looking for your approval to add that additional position.
So, Dr. Gogan, just a question actually regarding, I'm sure that there is need for at least one more person on that team right now. Are there any thoughts around what that will look like when hopefully things start to resume some sense of normalcy? Are we going to have less reliance on tech at that point? Any thoughts on what that might look like?
Can I answer that?
Yes, you can.
I'm jumping at the bit, I'm sorry.
We have a model.
I do, and I live this every day. And it has always been our goal to add a fourth before COVID, prior COVID. We had slowly started building our tech team. When we were working on getting our contracted service providers as they were leaving the district, we worked on building our tech team. So, our goal has to move, John has been gaining some of that higher level knowledge to handle those level two and those level three items. And then, we have level two who handle the mid-range. And then, we have our level one support staff going around. What I would have been coming to you last year asking for another position, but when COVID hit and our budget was reduced, that took a back burner. And at that point, we didn't pursue it. We didn't know what our budget was going to be like this year. Since then, things have improved. We, we were a level funded from last year and our numbers are looking good for our FY '21. So, that budget, that position is needed whether we are remote or in school. The level of support, we are just, we've been adding technology to our district every year. It was always our plan to get more devices for our K-1. And now, with the added laptops and web cameras and everything on top of that, it's just now is the time to really add that position so we can continue to support. Because what we, what we're finding now is that we're not, we don't want to let those higher level needs. We've been so proactive at building our technology, building our infrastructure and getting our equipment that we don't want to let that go by the wayside and not deal with those higher level things. If we're not taking care of our servers and monitoring all of that, and you must have heard from other communities out there with they're coming in and they're taking hostage of their data and, you know, they're locking communities down. So, it, it's important now more than ever that we're vigilant with all of that work. So, that's why I'm coming to you asking for that position. And it certainly can be funded out of the LEA like Dr. Boden said. We have seen some salary savings this year with subs and other line items. So, we are in a good position to do that with both positions.
Thank you, Mrs. Perengeli. It sounds like this is a position that feels like it's long overdue and there will be plenty of work to go around, even, even if we have students full-time in the building. Okay, thanks. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve an additional 1 FTE technology support personnel.
移到
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Blythe?
Yeah.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the acceptance of donation of winter coats from It Starts at Home.
In Webster Kindness Matters, we have been working again with Jill St. Seer and the It Starts at Home organization. And they have donated 28 brand-new coats to our school. And we'd like you to accept that donation. They have been distributed to, through the school nurses offices. And we are also working with them on holiday gifts. We are working with them to support 60 families over the holidays.
Wonderful. They've done a lot for our students over the past several years. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the donation of winter coats from It Starts at Home.
移到
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Blythe?
Yeah.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes, the motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the review, transfer, signing of warrants, bills, payroll, and vouchers. Are there any questions from the committee regarding the information that was provided in the packet?
There was no warrant tonight. That will be at your next school committee meeting. The town has, the dates were a little off from our dates this time. So, we're holding and we'll put one forward for next meeting. But I will need signatures for payroll if somebody would be willing to stop in, either Ms. Siddiqui or Ms. Blythe by the end of the week. If somebody could stop in and sign, that would be appreciated.
I'll be in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Mrs. Mallett?
Can I ask the superintendent to just briefly explain to people who are watching about how the metrics have changed and puts us now in the yellow even though our numbers are going up? And that, how Dussie is involved with that decision?
I can briefly explain, I can briefly explain it. This past week, the governor came out in conjunction with the Commissioner of Education and they changed the metric system. They changed the percentages of what would qualify you into red. So, even though our numbers increased, we are now in the yellow. So, the data has been manipulated to not have as many communities in the red, even though the numbers have come up. I can't speak to why that has occurred, but I can infer from the messages that I've been receiving from the Commissioner of Education that there is a strong push to get kids back into school, as we've heard from Vivian tonight. Children miss school and they miss the normal environment and routine. And the commissioner is looking and sharing data around the research that schools are not super spreaders. So, that's the current data that they're using. And so, the new metric system, even though the cases are increasing at a rapid rate, puts us in a yellow. They did change the metric to state that even if you are in red, to go to hybrid. So that it does impact all of us.
And two.
Through the chair.
Yes, Mrs. Naprata?
So, I understand that the total case numbers are increasing because each week there are additional positive tests in the town of Webster. But for the past three weeks, the number of positive tests has actually decreased. 1014, it was 30 new cases. 1021, it was 24 new cases. 1028, it was 17. And 114, it was 12. So, yes, I mean, that increases that bottom line, but that number has decreased. And that correlates with the weekly report that, that we, that where you receive on that COVID map from mass.gov, where you see that decrease in number of positive cases and decrease in positive test rates here in Webster. I mean, all that being said, you know, I do think it was the right move clearly to move towards the hybrid model. We will hopefully be two weeks out of the red by next Monday. That will be determined based on the report that comes out this Thursday. I believe they're still releasing it on Thursday. I know last week it was released on Friday.
Okay, yeah, they're changing the dates.
Right, it was Wednesday for a while, then they changed to Thursday. Last week it was something different and it came out on Friday. So, I anticipate it's going back to Thursday this week. And, you know, I've had a conversation with my daughter about she needs to take responsibility and be safe and not be lax with the rules. I feel that schools are safe because everybody's doing the right thing. And so, I would just implore parents to have those conversations with their kids, particularly these high schoolers who are really excited about returning and sometimes take risks, unfortunately. But I, I trust that the administration is going to not let that happen. And also, you know, just to ask staff to continue with their own personal vigilance in terms of safety and, you know, what goes on outside of the school building. So, I want us to do our parts as parents and staff to do their part. And, you know, I think the hope is that everybody will stay safe and that's it.
I, I think we have some very, very, very strong safety structures in our schools. We have a safety assessment that everybody fills out in the morning. We're, we're, we are all putting our best foot forward. And the data that you and I have is a little different, so I'm going to call you on, on that. But, you know, I think the message is safety first, follow the guidelines and we will try to do our best. I do want families that are listening to understand that we are doing our best. There will be bumps in the road, as there were with remote learning. And the way we get through the bumps in the road in Webster is by communicating openly about them. I think all of our intents are to make sure that the kids come first and that they're receiving their education. And we have to have a very strong partnership and communication is key with that. From the students to the families, to the teachers. And we've had a very transparent plan where everybody was in agreement with it. And we sort of have split a little, but that's okay. We're still in this together. And we will take one day at a time and one week at a time as we proceed forward. So, I'll call you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments from the committee before we close out this evening?
I have a question, if I could just add this in. Since the last meeting was supposed to include a discussion of problem solving surrounding the hybrid model and setting some parameters for how to move to, which we've skipped over, but how to then remain in the hybrid model. It doesn't look like that's on the agenda for tonight. Could that be added to the next meeting's agenda, especially after we have some time in the model to see what we need to problem solve?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Can I, who's speaking?
Oh, Sarah, Sarah Cole, I'm a teacher at Park Ave.
Ms. Siddiqui?
Yes.
I would like to make a suggestion to the teachers that we, we bring forth those questions to our building principals and we work in the building with those. And some of the questions that were on the sheet tonight, we do have some answers for that we wouldn't necessarily have to bring into this forum. But we can answer those questions and there will be questions. And I, I think the message for all of us is that the model that we have is going to evolve, right? We're going to give it our best shot and it's going to evolve. And what it evolves to is going to take everybody giving feedback. So, I think what issues may be at the elementary school may not be issues at the middle school or the high school. What issues at the high school may not be issues at the elementary school. So, I think we should have some formats in each of our schools to debrief after the first week of hybrid.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan. Does that answer your question, Ms. Cole?
I suppose it does for now. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, if there are no other questions or comments from the committee, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Blythe?
Yeah.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes, motion passes. Meeting adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.
Have a good evening.